Okay, we're in 2021. Stand for the pledge allegiance and place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you call a roll?
Yes, ma'am. A quorum is present for the City Council Successor Agency, Housing Authority Agency, Housing Authority Finance Authority, Parking Authority, and the Joint Powers Authority.
Anyone wishing to make public comment may dial in 888-251-2949 or 215-861-0694. The access code for today, May 4th, is 2012120. Wait two seconds and then press pound again. Again, it's zero, excuse me, 2012120. Wait two seconds and press a pound again. Anyone's wishing to make a public comment right now for anything on the agenda at this time may do so. Operator, are there any callers on the line?
Yes, sir. We'll go to the first caller. Caller, your line is unmuted. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Beverly Kenworthy. I'm with the California Apartment Association. I tried to call in last week, but somehow it didn't work out. So I'm pleased to be here today. Our organization had a really nice, good conversation with Mr. Decatur on Friday, and we are asking you to consider including two amendments to the tenant protection ordinance that you're considering. Both are under the section of tenant harassment. The first would be to include the California Code, Civil Procedure Code definition of harassment. The reason that we ask that this be placed in is sometimes these cases do go end up in court. And this is the standard by which courts apply harassment under that definition. And so we think this makes it a stronger tenant harassment ordinance if you add that. The second is there should be a period, a 15-day period, for a right to cure if there is an allegation of harassment that the landlord should have the ability to cure that before going down a long road of, I don't know, mediation or fines and penalties. That concludes my remarks. Thank you very much. Goodbye.
Thank you very much. Operator, next caller.
Caller, your line is unmuted. Please go ahead.
Okay, I'm Ricky Williams. And mine would be an ordinance of no fault. I live at 333 West Queen Street, and I support the ordinance where the building has been sold and now everyone has to vacate. And under the conditions that I am, I've been here 14 years and a fixed income where I paid like $1,200 a month. In the process of me having to move, the financial situation is unbearable. There's no one, no other apartments for it with $1,600, $1,700 for one-bedroom apartment. And I'm looking for some type of protection where I don't have to worry about being evicted for something that's no fault of my own. And I would like to understand, is there any other protection that a renter would have? And that's Ricky Williams. It's 333 West Queen Street.
Thank you. Operator, next caller.
Caller, your line is unmuted. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name's Nathan Miller with the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles, now representing Inglewood Rental Housing Providers under charter of the National Apartment Association. I'm providing comment on Agenda Item 01, Amendments to the City's Rent Stabilization Ordinance. The Association appreciates the recent opportunity for engagement with the Inglewood city staff to discuss the proposed amendments to the city's housing protection ordinance and our concerns. Meaningful engagement with the city is vital to address community concerns in advance of extensive legislative changes. As the City Council contemplates these expansive amendments, we strongly urge the council to modify the proposed amendments to provide essential clarity and more balanced approach. With the ready addition of tenant harassment provisions, our association does not condone or tolerate any form of renter harassment by our members or any, under any circumstances. But it is equally important to recognize that the issue of harassment is not isolated to renters, as rental housing providers also experience harassment. Equitable anti-harassment provisions should be inclusive and provide a right of action to all affected parties, renters and rental housing providers. As to the definition of harassment, it's critical that the definition provide clear guidance to foster understanding, minimize opportunity for misinterpretation, and facilitate compliance with the ordinance. We recommend that the council use the definition of harassment as set forth in the California Code of the Civil Procedure. The state law harassment provisions are well-established, recognizable, time, and court-tested standards. We also urge the council to include within the ordinance's harassment section notice and an opportunity to cure provisions for all alleged harassment violations. Inclusion of notice and an opportunity to cure facilitates communication, minimizes misunderstandings, and informs the housing provider of the alleged issues so that the situation will be rectified without the need for costly and potentially lengthy litigation or prosecution. The Association appreciates the extension of the rental registration deadline and waiver of the initial fee for those who register on time, but we remain strongly opposed to the extent of and administratively burdensome rental registry requirements and placement of the onus on owners to prove that they are exempt. We are equally concerned with the elimination of the just cause tenancy termination for substantial remodel. This termination basis, which is commissable under state law AB 1482, is clearly defined and recognizes the importance of upgrading the city's aging housing stock. Lastly, we urge the council to establish within the ordinance the formula to be utilized for both the capital improvement pass-through and petition process for rent adjustment. Do not leave it.
Operator, next caller.
Caller, your line is unmuted. Please go ahead.
Is that my line? Hello? Hello?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that my line?
Ms. Craft, we can hear you.
Hello?
We can hear you.
First of all, my three minutes are not starting yet. Now, that just illustrated, as well as the minutes, illustrate Brownneck violations and the need for three minutes for each agenda item. The proposed, regarding the proposed reward for the information regarding Ms. Crawford's tragic death, it's appropriate to use the available asset forfeiture fund. I am concerned that you did not specify what is the quote, "another funding source," unquote, however. Number five, clear data paste for law enforcement investigations. I'm concerned who has access to it as it is sensitive information and can easily be abused, and there are individuals and leadership representing the city in Inglewood PD who have integrity issues. I think the rent control ordinance needs to be reworked in some areas. The spirit of the law is to protect renters from landlord abuse and abusive landlords, not to penalize honest landlords and including mom and pops. A public meeting among council members was inappropriate and confusing, and I think that a series of public meetings with input and discussion with the stakeholders, which are the renters and landlords, property owners, whether they're currently renting or not, so basically citizens, needs to be had. Owning four units or properties is generally a business move, and owner occupied due to two units on a property and/or ADU should be rated differently with clear exemptions and different rules. And the fees, schedule, and costs are disproportionate to small owners and mom and pops. And someone who has a rental interest in four or more properties in California should probably fall under the Inglewood rent control. Now, why are two residents being exempted in this bill? One was on Regent. There are, there needs to be recruitment sweet spots for renters and owners. I don't know how you're going to do that, though. And the exemption fees are a lot. You need to have better rights to cure. I'm concerned that the mayor is nominating the members of the board because we've seen how the boards are, they have been set up already, and you can't even get a quorum for the police commission. They haven't met hardly ever. And I think that the board should be one renter and one owner landlord from each district, respectively. A social justice rep for the renters and then a representative for the owner landlords so that there is no conflict and that it helps, you know, smooth things out. Because of the increased real estate activity, protecting us all from gougers is key. And, but some aspects of this ordinance make this more attractive to just develop and sell condos. So I think that you need to go back to the drawing board on portions of this and make it a lot more fair.
Thank you. Operator, next caller.
Caller, your line is unmuted. Please go ahead.
Gil Matthew. This is for Man City Council. On the warrant register, we have a lot of refunds from the water fund for various owners and corporations. And if you could have someone just explain a little bit about what is such and so much water fund, about the water fund being re-refunded. Now, 401 South Prairie, that's a corporation. 612 Eric, that's a corporation. And also, we still have a lot of legal fees being paid off the warrant register. And it needs to be, someone needs to look at the way the warrant register is being done and do some oversight. And also, on the plan check, we paying a lot of consultants for plan check, plan checks. At one time, we had a department in the city that did all the plan checks.
We still have it.
And now that, yeah.
Yeah, we do still have a lot more activity.
I know you have a lot of activity. That's why I'm wondering why you can't do the plan check in-house for an organization.
We do have in-house level. We do.
Well, do the plan check in-house.
... such as Elmo Morales, who's been here for us for a long time, to protect us. That's what I'm asking. Protect my children. If it were just about me, that's fine. I can go. I've been homeless before. So I don't mind, but these are my children who love Inglewood, who live in Inglewood. I know what's about to happen, and we all know what's about to happen. Let us search our consciences. Don't go for the money. These people are using legal loopholes, and they have, they do have their lawyers. They have people that they can use to actually beat us, okay? With COVID going on, my unemployment, my wife's health, and my children who are right now in my house going to school five days a week. I have to, I have to be teacher, parent. I mean, there's, I know there's a money side to it. There's a politics side to it, but this is, these are human lives. And that's all I'm asking, please. That's all I'm asking. Mayor Buzz, Elmo Morales, all our minority people, protect my children. That's all.
Sir, what was your name again?
Okorie, Mr. O-K-O-R-I-E. I usually see Mayor Buzz.
Your councilman's going to address you, and then I'm going to address you.
Yeah, and all I'm going to say is thank you very much for calling. Obviously, sir, I can tell you that whoever told you that is trying to misguide you and trying to put you in a situation where you may make a decision that may benefit them. The truth is that every step we're taking here will continue to protect you. The ordinance is going nowhere. And I'm glad you have your children here watching history because the history is going to protect families like yours. And what I want to point out, though, is the fact that families like this are basically being blindsided. They're getting notices like this so that they can have fear inside them, so that they can continue to be in a place in their mind where they think they have to leave, where they think they're unwanted. This is exactly what we're trying to end with our action here. So I know the mayor is going to point out the technical flaws and everything you've been told. I just wanted to share the fact that families like yours are the reason we're creating this protection, we're moving it forward. And I'm sorry that you are going through that with that bad message from your owners, but I hope that the people listening also see that they should question when they get this kind of notice, and they should call our department here to get clarity because families like yours are going to be protected with the things we're doing here. So thank you for calling in, Mayor.
You know, first thing, I'm really sorry that Planet Fitness isn't open because then you could have just talked to me at the gym like everybody always does. But here's the deal, here's the deal. For renovations, they cannot evict you. They can offer you up to $10,000 to relocate. They could offer you more if they chose to. But if you don't want to move, then the accommodations will have to be made so that you can keep your place. So I look forward to seeing you in the gym, but you've been misled, and we are definitely here for you. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you.
Operator, next caller.
No further callers.
All right.
Mayor.
But there is one email comment.
Yes, sir. Okay. May I have three minutes, please?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, my name is Amber Kipler, and my family owns two apartment buildings in Inglewood. We have had these properties since 1970. I urge the City Council to be fair and equitable when addressing amendments to the RSO. Allowing the RSO sunset clause to be removed would give the city all the power in controlling the city's rent in perpetuity when it was intended to help stabilize rents in a strong market only through 2024. This grants the city too much power, and there needs to be a balance. Additionally, putting stronger restrictions on landlords and raising the rents and dealing with evictions would cause irreparable harm to landlords because it creates an additional hurdle that must be overcome and more than likely not to meet the threshold. If I have a unit that is desperate, that is in a desperate need of a major remodel and need to evict the tenant with proper notice so that the unit may be gutted and rebuilt, I should be able to do that. My tenants have all lived in my buildings for more than a year, so that requires a 60-day notice to vacate. This is more than adequate time for a tenant to find new housing. Do not take this ability away from landlords. You are de-insensitizing people from wanting to own rental properties in your city. Actions like these will cause property owners to sell and get out of the city. Rent registration is simply a money grab from the city to rent, to get money from property owners, and we already pay annual business licenses. This is not necessary and is a huge financial burden to the independent family-run landlords. The pandemic has increased our operational costs, but our rents have had to stay, had to remain the same throughout the past year. No late fees have been collected. There have been higher costs for utilities due to safer at-home orders, and there are tenants who can't pay rent. Where is the fairness to landlords? Now, the city is proposing raising rent ration. This is agreed at its finest. I appreciate you taking the time to hear my comments. Please bear them in mind when taking, when making your decision. I urge you to amend, not to amend, the RSO in the way that will irreparably harm landlords slash property owners. Respectfully, Amber Kipler.
Okay, thank you very much. And before we go on to the agenda, I've been informed that those flowers are not for Councilwoman Falk. They're actually for our outstanding city clerk because it's City Clerk's Day today. So, so.
Thank you all. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ayesha.
Thank you for everything you do, Ayesha.
Oh, look at the nice picture. That's nice.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Okay, item one, I will close public comment. Item one, CSA one and H1.
Warrant register.
Move allow payments. Madam Clerk.
Council members, successor agency members.
Item two.
Yes, sir. Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on September 22nd, 2020, and September 20th, Mayor Buzz.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buzz.
Aye. Oh, one.
Staff report recommending introduction of an ordinance to amend Inglewood Municipal Code, Chapter 8, Article 9, and 10, and Chapter 2, Article 3.
Motion to wait for the reading.
Second.
Madam Clerk, Director Decatur, Housing Protection Department.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers.
City manager. The item before you is an amendment to the city's housing protection allowance to recoup 50% of the cost for a capital improvement project has increased from $50 to $100. This past week has been extremely busy. The exchange department has received numerous calls from tenants who are appreciative of the council-approved amendment and landlords who are thankful that we listened, considered, and included some concessions based on the feedback they provided. Over the past 24 hours, I have participated in conference calls with apartment owners associations and realtors for the city of Inglewood. They were able to ask questions and obtain clarity on a number of issues as well as provide additional input. With that, monitoring force the codes, they also tasked us with providing efficient and equitable, efficient and equitable services to both tenants and landlords as much as possible. We are appreciative of not only the voice of our tenant constituency, but to the owners as well. We are aware that owners who have invested in the city long before can attest that our City Council is very cognizant of the impact that this pandemic has had on our entire constituency, including the owners. So, with that said, I absolutely stand by my registration fees that are established by the fee study. But I do understand that right now in the current climate, $206 could be tad bit value.
And a fair market value established by HUD so that people know where to look to see that.
Yes.
All right.
And it would be contingent upon them registering on time, and that's it.
Individual apartments that rent at less, 70% or less than fair market value would have the fees waived for so long as they are beneath that 70% threshold. But this would not apply to the entire building, but only to those apartments within a building.
The units.
The individual units.
Exactly.
That are 70% or less than.
Yes.
Okay. Are any, are there any questions from the council?
Questions or comments?
Comments are a good thing.
The, so I wanted to say that that is definitely geared towards the motivation we've all received. And obviously, Ms. Decatur received all of the apartment owners that were appreciative of everything she did. I got the other ones. I got the other ones that definitely questioned what we were doing. But one of the major items that kept coming up is that they valued, they're longtime owners. They valued their tenants there, and they wanted to keep them. And the way they keep them is by keeping a very low-market rate price on their rent. And so they, they're motivated by that. They want to keep them. And so this addresses that. This allows them to do it. This shows our support of them doing it while keeping the rent down. Like the mayor clarified, it's motivated by choosing which tenants have been there for over 10 years. Being, it will also really help owners that.
Outstanding job in their questions, hitting it off from the beginning. So quite frankly, the questions they manage are Mr. Fields because he helped give us some talking points to work together so that we could be better prepared for these type of Zoom meetings because we know this is a hot button item. So I want to thank you, Mr. Fields, as well.
Thank you, Mr. Fields.
And they did an amazing job to come back here the next week and present this information after speaking with our community and hearing their concerns and coming back again and addressing them. Is, that's how hard we work here at the city of Inglewood, and I just want our residents to really understand and appreciate how good our employees are. So thank you, Ms. Decatur, for all your hard work, and we appreciate it. And I agree wholeheartedly with you.
And I just want to say, just because I didn't acknowledge your hard work doesn't mean they like you more than I like you. Thank you, Mayor.
Out of all people.
No, no, no. We all like you more. Well, okay, so look, I want to say this. I spent 15 years in the city of Santa Monica. They've had rent control since, I think, 1988, '83 or '88, but whatever. Even by the time I got there in 19, for the duration of my time there. And I will tell you this. And so he says to this day. And so, but what I wanted to say was, this is an issue of balance, finding balance. And the beautiful thing in my experience in what we've done here in Inglewood, what you and your people, your supervisors and your people have done, been customer-oriented, and what usually is just a wildfire has been manageable because you see the emotion when Shimon called. You saw the gentleman that, you know, he had the misinformation that he was going to have to move himself and his children. But because of the work of you and your team and the council's input, we have had a lot less contention than something like this would generate.
That is true.
It's going to be a continual attempt to find balance.
Yes.
And fairness.
Yes.
And so I want to thank you, you and your staff for your work, and it's much appreciated. This was really needed in the city. It was really needed, but it had to be right. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So now, I move that we adopt a motion to waive the fees.
Mayor.
Yes.
Not to cut you off. Kindly, can we go back because we don't have an introduction to the ordinance?
Do we have to do that first before we introduce it? And that, as recommended, that any landlord that wants to take advantage of this exemption. I know, but first, the first, the first date that they.
Is between January 7th through March 31st.
Okay, and that they must ongoing.
And you pointed out that time period. I would just further clarify that whatever the time period is annually to register.
Right. Okay, and that's the point I was going to bring up because it was a little.
You know, they say great minds think a lot. Proven once again. Okay. Okay, so now with that, I'm moved to introduce.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buzz.
Aye.
Point of clarity, Mayor?
Yes.
Should we have voted on the amendment before the introduction of the ordinance? Can we do this again?
Okay, so, okay, so we'll vote on my beautiful. I already made the motion.
I need a second.
Okay, okay. Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buzz.
Aye.
Now I need an introduction.
I'll introduce.
Thank you.
Alex will introduce. Okay.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to first thank my colleagues for the recognition. I truly, truly appreciate it. If it is to, you know, work with strong men and women, and I truly thank you so much, and I really do. I thank you. But I would like to raise awareness that this week does mark the 52nd Annual Municipal Clerk Week. In 1984, President Ronald Reagan signed a proclamation that officially cleared Municipal Clerk's Week as the first full week of May. In 1994 and '96, then-President Bill Clinton also signed a proclamation confirming Municipal Clerk's Week. Tomorrow is Cinco de Mayo, and Cinco de Mayo is an annual celebration held on May 5th. This date is observed to commemorate the Mexican Army victory over the French Empire at the Battle of Puebla on May 5th, 1862. Happy Cinco de Mayo Day to everyone. I also want to wish all our residents here in the city of Inglewood a happy Mother's Day for Sunday. This concludes my remarks, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. CSA two.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on September 22nd, 2020, and September 29th, 2020.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Counselor, successor agency members.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Abstain.
Chairman Buzz.
Buzz.
Aye. Adjourn the Inglewood ordinance authority.
On September 20th.
Persons wishing to address the city. Hmm.
One.
There's one caller, and, oh, oh.
He said one second.
So this is like, what was that game that you? One syllable?
Right, right, right.
Two words?
Right.
Okay, charades, that's what it was.
No, when I.
Audio is frozen, we're gonna reset it, take just a minute.
Okay. I like the charades better, actually.
I'm not surprised that you actually watch TV. I've never watched TV, let's just.
He always holds up one finger, send me one second or one.
Yeah, right.
Now we'll see our security force downstairs, they, they always. We can't beat the way Hushart that sergeant once. She's rough as anything like that, man. We're ready, man. I'm waiting for.
I'm waiting for you, man.
What do you want?
There's some additional callers now. Yes, Mayor, go ahead, they can go. Me? Are you talking about me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hello? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. There's continued deliberate Brown Act violations, I think there just one happened again. Consolidated meetings also do not allow citizen input, especially since we don't get three minutes for each agenda item. The citywide park and parking ordinances are discriminatory, and also we are discrimination. I and other black homeowners have been refused to enter open houses just a few doors away from our homes. The city should also not allow联 housing to co-opt the name Fairview Heights for the beautiful, affordable, transitional housing in the wonderful historical section of Inglewood named Fairview Heights. The Police Oversight Commission needs to be up and running. Page 25 of the, um, ordinance, you're repealing 435 West Regent and 621 East 99th, uh, rent control, uh, in December of 2024, and still no response from Butts, Padilla, Fields, Decatur, Atwell, and others regarding critical and urgent health and safety, personal and property issues. If you can call out citizens' names, you can also return phone calls and emails.
Thank you. Uh, are any other callers, operator?
Yes, a couple more now, next caller. Caller, your line is unmuted, please go ahead.
It's Gil Matthew, District Four, Man City Council. Is the Oversight Commission still in, in, uh, session or dismissed the Oversight Police Commission? If so, they should be, uh, brought back as soon as possible, and we should get an election scheduled. You know, you three of you sitting here, your council seats have already expired. Now you scheduled for November, when are you gonna have elections for the primary and nominations, uh, open for people to be nominated and file? Also, uh, you need complaint forms at the police station, and it's just, it's just, um, things that need to be done, it's small, but we need, we have a police, uh, department on balance, they, they're very good, and the police that, that caught the guy running from the crash that killed two people, he should be accommodated. And also, uh, on the, um, parking enforcement, now there should be, be, uh, organized immediately, do not assign another group.
Okay, Mr. Matthew, Mr. Matthew, we're, we're over time right now. Operator, are there any other callers?
Okay.
Operator, are there any other callers?
Caller, on you, because you don't like when people tell the truth about some of your actions, and you didn't show up to court regarding illegal, you need to fix it, Mayor Buzz. So, and you need to control your cop. So you need to show that you knew for 20 years, to stop playing games and, and start doing your job as a mayor. And you got my email, you never returned my phone to fix it, then Ellis took that bribe, that's the only reason why, she told the lady to, uh, charge me with annoying phone calls. I was told by your city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Days, you're at time, operator, next caller, please.
No additional callers.
Okay, we'll close public comment, and we'll move to, uh, council comments, Councilman Padilla, if you have any.
Thank you, Mayor, do you have a couple of things I wanna bring up? Uh, I wanna congratulate Andy, so wish you all the best in your retirement. I used to do a great job talking about Cinco de Mayo, I was like, dang, all right, I'm done. But, uh, you know, that being said, uh, you know, have a good time tomorrow for Cinco de Mayo, but then follow it up with the bigger celebration Friday evening at the Knights of Columbus Hall. My wife Stella and I will be there cooking up a delicious Cinco de Mayo dinner from 5:00 to 7:30. Uh, you can come in, you can pick it up to go, or we're gonna have some limited seating inside. A, a good time will be had by all, and we will be playing some mariachi music courtesy of Pandora, so, uh, we will be enjoying and eating and just having a good fellowship. Uh, again, Mother's Day, this Sunday, to all the mothers, whether, you know, you're an aunt, you know, uh, somebody that's raising somebody's child, you know, we all serve in a motherly role in different, different fashions, but I wanna wish all the mothers a happy Mother's Day, and Feliz Dia de las Madres in Mexico, we also do it on May the 10th, and we have so many Hispanics here in, in our city, and I know they'll be celebrating both on the, on Sunday and on May 10th. So Feliz Dia de las Madres, and you guys enjoy your day. Oh, and I wanna thank, uh, Councilmember Dion Falk for joining me to wear our Dodger blue tonight.
Okay, okay, so, but I, I have a point of order, Eloy, since you are a senior member of the council. Is it allowed to advertise an event that is in Westchester?
We have always been able to give the courtesy to well-behaved council people. And actually, I have attended that, that's a great event.
And it covers.
And if he wasn't there, they'd have Trump.
Councilwoman Falk.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I do want to, um, acknowledge our wonderful Madam City Clerk for, uh, what is it, Annual Professional Municipal Clerk's Week. We appreciate you, you do a lot for city council, for mayor, for our city, so thank you so much, and we hope you enjoy, uh, your flower from all of us. Um, also, today is National Teacher Appreciation Day, and God knows, I appreciate our teachers. Thank you, God, for teachers. Um, I have two kids, a 10-year, 10-year-old, 11-year-old, and, um, my youngest is back to school, and he loves his teacher, and, um, and so they just, uh, they educate, inspire, and support our young kids, so, um, wishing all of our teachers a wonderful day, we appreciate you, especially here in the city of Inglewood. Then also today is National Foster Day Care, um, in celebration of over 400,000 foster care children that are in, that are in the, at any day, um, so we want to acknowledge them, and also, you know, make sure that we, whenever we come encounter with a foster care child, we do something nice to them, to support them, um, we appreciate them, and, um, we want to lift them up on this very special National Foster Care Day.
So, so Councilwoman, every day when you get up, do you like Google the day?
I was thinking the same thing, Mayor.
Well, you know what's so interesting is there's so many Awareness Days, Mayor.
Well, that's what I am, so I'm sitting here amazed, right?
And, and we gotta, gotta make sure, acknowledge these days, they're, they're very important.
Well, you, you filled your niche right there. All right? All right? Councilwoman.
You are, you are so funny, okay?
Council, I'm sorry, I didn't know you weren't finished.
Just one more, just one more, um, this is gonna be the funny one. Today is National Star Wars, Star Wars Day.
Oh, okay.
So I wanna wish our mayor and our council members, uh, a happy, uh, Star Wars Day, and may the fourth be with you.
That was cute.
Always cute, Mayor, I'm always cute.
That was cute, may the fourth be with you. We picked up on that. Councilman Morales.
So just wanna say, you know, we all are here, uh, we can all say something about some teacher that inspired us in our life, and it's, I mean, I'm surprised, surprised there's only one, but, you know, congratulations to all teachers, I wish you the best, I thank you for, for everything, and all of my teachers, I thank you for everything. I wanted to point out just briefly that, you know, it was a heavy lift, this rent control ordinance, but we have been working on it for a couple of years, and, you know, we won't get credit for it. We won't get credit for being one of the only cities who has an economic impact like ours and created a way to try to help our residents through it all. And I'll tell you that I'm proud of that. The mayor spoke a little bit about, about how, you know, this process has been easier than he has seen in other cities, and I agree. Um, but it got me to think that, man, you know, we really did take this step, and it wasn't an easy one, but it was done, and hopefully, you know, we'll continue to evolve. But I wanted to point out that, that we may be one of the few cities who has addressed this in a time like this, so I'm proud of us for that, and a happy Mother's Day to everybody. Thank you.
Okay, happy Mother's Day, uh, to mothers and, and caregivers and everyone that's been an impact in Charles' life. Thank you very much to the city clerk and her staff for all that you do. I really, so hard, she's a, just a, an apt companion to the city council and the city, and I wanna thank her today on, on Teachers' Day. And, uh, again, congratulations to everyone involved in the rent, sustainable rent effort, and, uh, we're adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.